Part of the taking more. Motion to approve the agenda in minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda in minutes.
One second.
Moving second for the discussion.
Morning. A couple of things, we took quotes for normal painting, yearly painting and we had three quotes come in and can line painting is the lowest per gallon prices and some and some symbols and that. Their total quote was one hundred and forty six thousand seven forty six now is between both counties. I mean, we have, we probably have fifty, we have fifty eight miles versus Mitchell County's eighty seven, so we aren't quite half of that cost. About our typical costs for roadway painting, so we'll have that. Most of it's going to be on the southern half of the county this year. I think that over the half was kind of done last year, so. That, so we're going to award that quote out. And we have, we got our motor greater quote back for those used ones and pretty favorable. Two machines we're looking at getting one has sixteen hundred eighty nine hours, one has thirteen hundred and forty one, so really low hours for twenty fifteen model. And they're giving us roughly thirty three thousand trade on our old vocals. So that brings the combined cost of the machines to four hundred and ninety thousand for two all wheel drive machines, which is really nice. I mean, a brand new all wheel drive machine is going to cost you maybe thirty, forty thousand less than that if you're lucky. We'll have to do some, so I think we're going to go ahead and and take these machines. Uh, one machine still has some warranty on it. The other one doesn't. I'll talk to mechanical bits who want to add the warranties because they can be kind of spendy for and we can, the 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 lowest amount of warranty is probably going to be, if we do powertrain and hydraulics, we're looking at anywhere from ninety five hundred dollars to thirteen thousand dollars for uh, anywhere from a sixty month warranty to a thirty six, but the most we can get for hours is three thousand hours, so there's no sense in getting a warranty that's going to take us longer than three years because we've put a thousand hours on a year anyway, so we'll look at some warranty stuff, but for the time being, I mean, the biggest thing is to get the machines in our fleet and get them moving, so and we're we're familiar with the vintage of the machines, so we kind of know where all of our issues are at with them. There's not many with them, other than our after treatment systems have been kind of goofy, but maybe we got a different lot of machines that don't have those issues, but they were all leased machines, I think, that came out of, I think they were leased out of the cities or something, and they were putting very little hours on them, obviously, so. I think we're going to go ahead with that, which rolls us into, uh, when I talked to the DOT, I know Jackie was kind of doing county amendment um, for budget. I can't, I have to have mine done before tomorrow. And when I talked to the DOT, she said, well, for a DOT budget amendment, we don't need a public hearing. So we've got an amendment for the DOT budget, which, when you guys do the county budget, will be similar numbers anyway. But what we're doing is, because I know my carryover balances were higher from the previous year, we had one point two carryover anticipated when we did the budget December and ended up being two point four, so we have money there. And the only thing I'm amending is we had a hundred thousand dollars in equipment. I bumped it to six hundred thousand dollars um, to buy these machines, so we're going to have a little bit more in the, because we now know what the costs are, we're going to have a little bit extra, but the only amendment is going to be to raise the the equipment budget up by five hundred thousand dollars. So that's the only thing in the amendment that I need to have approved for DOT and I can get that sent off. And you guys can just, I don't know if it by resolution or by, I don't have a resolution to amend it, but I do have the budget paperwork if you
Just by approval.
I think my approval is fine. If we need a resolution, resolute changing of it, but I don't have any formal document for it.
A motion to approve the DOT budget amendment for secondary road.
I'll second that.
For the discussion. Say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign.
Okay. So I'll get that.
What was the cost that last one? There's three hundred and thirty thousand or something like that for that deer?
Yeah, it was, yeah, yeah, I remember what the, what the exact number was, but I mean, it's a newer machine, obviously, but still, we're going to get, and 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 deer isn't competitive, competitive since we we ordered a machine in in Mitchell County and it was not competitive at all. I mean, the numbers weren't close enough that we would select a deer over the cat. These are going to have different different wing setups than we're used to, but we're going to keep them anyway. They're not full benching wings, but lately we haven't required a full benching wing for a long time. The front, uh, the front hitches are going to be different. We might have to modify some of our plows to make it work, but we'll get through that right now. We'll get it, we may look at, I think the wing extensions can be the same off of the twelve, the old twelve and threes, the mold boards are probably the same, so we can just use those extensions because in the winter time, we don't use extensions anyway, so we wouldn't need to purchase any more extensions. We'll just have to modify some front plow stuff, so. If we're going to go ahead and get those things coming, so.
Right. Get anything else for it.
If not, I'm going to go and catch them in Mitchell County Board Meeting up there, so.
Okay.
All right. Questions, we call, see you at ten thirty.
Good.
Thanks. Alright, drainage. Nothing in range. Alright, cleanse and take a look at those and questions.
Motion approved, please.
I'll second it.
Moving second and if there's discussion. Here you know, say aye. Payroll claims, take a motion for payroll claims.
payroll.
Second. Second that.
Move discussion. Report.
There's one, it's the highlight of their, um, after talking to our external auditor. Anybody that he has board, we're going to acknowledge, you're not approving, you're just acknowledging, so they're in the minutes, so.
Okay.
The auditor see him.
Oh, as far as their salary.
Yeah, salary changes for public health.
And this is, this is toast, but
Yes.
hopefully they'll be ahead going forward.
Yeah. Should be.
Um, depends on if we get the info or not.
Right. We usually get it about a few days or a week later sometimes.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Okay.
So anyhow.
So I'll take a motion to acknowledge the salary changes for the Worth County Board of Health for Reagan and Rosen and Shannon Butler.
We'll make that a motion.
I'll say it.
Second. Say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign.
Yeah.
Alright.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is there, was there any other payroll that we'll do?
No.
Happy time. Motion to approve the license for happy time.
I'll make that a motion.
Sorry, second.
I'll second.
Need further discussion? Or no, I'll say aye. Close same sign. Rich. Okay. From the management.
Okay, there's, there's Craig Van Gers, and then I just emailed you three of them that came on Friday. Both Myers and oh, current corner view, would that be?
Be a.
Coles or something, yeah.
Should be Coles. So I took a motion to acknowledge the manure management plans.
Motion to acknowledge the management plans.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, second, I wasn't prepared to say aye. Motion will carry. EMS advisor council.
Um, well, I've been doing some talking and with some people have shown some interest, we've got some emails this week. What we're looking at, or what I'm thinking anyways, is maybe a representative from each department, which would be seven, so seven total departments. We will include our EMS director, Bob Rush, um, which he'll actually cover for Manley as well, so we won't have an extra person there. He'll just wear both hats. Probably someone from the sheriff's office as part of that. So myself. Unless one of you guys wants to do it.
You got more way. You absolutely go on and do it.
So we're, I mean, I'm thinking that ten to twelve, I hate to see a committee get so big that you can't get much accomplished. Um, so is there any thoughts of other people that you guys would like to include or?
I think you're hitting the main ones, especially get like the fire chiefs or whatever.
Yeah. We'll leave it up to the fire chiefs if it wants to be them or one of the representatives from the sheriff's department anyways.
Um, and some of those almost doubles township trustees too.
Yeah.
I mean, some of those, this one's every township is probably representative, I mean, that's important to.
Okay.
So Martin.
Get as much as we can, and I think as long as those representatives are, I'm sure they'll be commuting, obviously communicate with their departments, but there are people in their area as well. Um, so.
I know it's out of the county, but would you have somebody from Mason City Fire just give you some, or would you just have them talk to you or something?
Right, we probably will, um, especially once it comes into discussions with providers as far as ambulance, you know, because we've got Lake Mills, we've got Forest City, we've got Mason City.
Oh, yeah.
So when it comes to, we'll probably get our committee going and then bring those in after a couple of meetings, I would assume.
You have one, they were going through discussions too.
Yeah, yeah, and there, that's, I I talked with some people from Forest City um, on Friday, and that's what they were wondering is kind of which direction we were going, that's the which direction they were going. Um, so there may be, there'd be a lot of communication, I think, between the two groups, just, uh.
It'd be a joint meeting.
Yeah, you know, maybe get everyone in the right path, since they actually cover some of our territory as well, or our county, so. But, here's what I'll do is I'll, I'll start reaching out to, oh, email back some of the people, some of the emails we've gotten, and start reaching out to everybody else and try to get a list to, back to the board maybe by next week. And then get a good portion, because everybody that's been involved with these talks is aware, and they're, I think they're all ready.
They're ready.
So.
We're kind of shooting for twelve, thirteen of them.
I I wouldn't say, and not anymore than that, just so we can still be able to accomplish goals at a meeting, so.
Yeah.
And I'll often, often double check with what I O code says, because I know there is a couple of people in there, it's like, say, one supervisor EMS director, and then there may be another EMA, maybe part of that too. But I'll double checking, we'll obviously go by what the code says. To start anyways, and then go from there, and I'll try to get you guys a list that we can bring before the board and actually appoint that committee that works for you guys.
Yeah. So I wouldn't want to be on the committee per se, but I like a voice at the table when you guys are starting talking about locations and technology and all that.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
We'll call you county liaison.
Whatever.
I'm trying to be polite, we're like.
The more input, the better.
Well, I just, I was at Lee County here this last week, and they just stood up their own EMS and they didn't, it it's, yeah, there was not some good things there that were happening. So, right, technology wise.
No, that would probably be a good idea.
No, definitely, because at the end, it's going to be a, a county facility, a county.
County, county department.
County funded deal, so, yeah. So no, we'll definitely have to conclude that, so, okay, I'll start working on that, and hopefully bring, we could just keep that on the agenda for next week, for the list for next week to approve.
Okay. So, mental health advocate appointment. So. What's on there? You sent a couple of emails, I know.
Hancock had, had pointed. Well, they'd appointed.
Oh, and I never heard anything back from Melissa, because I reached out to her to ask who was paying for this person. I I I'm still trying to.
I'm going there today.
Yeah.
To Care Connection, so let me talk with them.
You're going there, you're coming to the meeting, or you gotta, you gotta skip the.
I'm not going to WHW, I'm going to.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. So, I'll, I'll chat with them because.
Because I think Winnebago still has Ruth.
Well.
So.
Hancock was going to use her, you said, that email.
Exactly.
As the advocate, and I didn't realize we had to have one.
It sounds like we do.
By code?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Is that? So, so we have to have one till July first, or we have to have one period?
You have to have. This is for you guys. So nobody today, so nobody to track over for city. There goes one.
A B H W.
Those canceled.
Yeah.
Oh.
But I I can, so I can talk with Melissa today, and and Bill should be there for Winnebago, she'll go with him and see.
Because I think the region covers the tab on that, but I'm not sure.
Right. Off the ask, because I know there's in our expense report for that, that was looking through, um, there is some, there's a claim going through for some services, so.
For county social services.
Yeah, yeah, so. Yeah. Do their, do their, do their, their claims um, that will be proven today, there's some pay going to Ruth for some services, so.
Yeah, which is, if it's part of our total thing, it's not a big deal to appoint her, but we'll figure that out.
Yeah.
Make sure that we need to point one, and you're saying you do.
Because I guess there's certain people that they have to visit with, and there's reports at the end of the year and stuff like that, that are required of every county.
So then we got to sit down, figure out the pay and all that too then.
Well. If that goes through Care Connections, then.
If it goes through there, yeah.
That committee or that board will just take care of it.
Yeah.
Okay, let me talk with her, with them today, when I get over there and see what's going on, and see what, we figure out, maybe even bring you something for next week.
I mean, regardless, we needed to resolve, dissolve WHW anyway, and then.
We just need to know, we need to point her.
Right.
Because you got the general services kind of covered.
Right.
We get the funeral thing lined up, but the mental health side of it was.
Which.
There's social services or whatever you want to call it, that's. Yeah.
There's.
Trying to figure out where the line is.
Yes.
Who does what?
That's it. Okay.
It does really overlap.
Wow. That's what I've always thought. Let's figure out, so.
Still learning.
Yeah.
The meeting's canceled for today, did they say on there when tentatively they want another one, or we're just not doing it?
No, just. Oh, the agenda wasn't posted.
Wow. No, it wasn't, I guess we haven't seen the agenda yet.
I just figured they'd hand it to us. That's happened in the past.
Which, as long as they posted that.
Yeah, as long as they, but they had it posted, so.
I must have skipped that procedure. Oh, whatever, play it by ear, so, okay. Um, okay, uh, bid letting for contract service provider.
Hi, Jason.
Morning.
Proposals reviewed last Thursday, eleven AM for the water and wastewater operation at the casino. One proposal was received. We have advertised to ten different contractors if you operate facilities like this, but I'm not extremely surprised we only have one, it's kind of territorial with the requirements, you have to have more than one person on staff to be able to operate a facility like this. People's Services who received, that's a proposal I handed out. Um, and they have some other facilities in the area that they operate, so they can draw from other facilities for some of the uh, more labor intensive maintenance activities, and likewise, when people are on vacation for covered dues, et cetera. Um, I haven't spent a lot of time reviewing it. I did spend, I guess, a little bit of time this morning, went through the proposal. There are several questions we have, I know I've talked to AJ a little bit too, he has a few questions as well. There were some specific requirements that we added to this RFP, like um, for locating the water lines, we said you have to have your own locator, well, they use their same language, they're using county's locator. Some of the maintenance repair cost item, there's conflicting amounts. Um, one, seven hundred and fifty, somewhere a thousand dollars as far as when there's going to be reimbursement. Uh, they forgot the list of staffing. They note several times, if there's six of them within thirty minutes of the facility, they're, they're licensed and capable of operating this. I have several questions, fee wise. The, if you look at the five years since they last submitted, adjusted, well, using the CPI, they're right, that's right where they were going to be, a hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars a year, a hundred and eighty eight, seven, twelve a year for the operation of maintenance of this. On July of twenty seventeen, it was a hundred and fifty nine thousand, and I just did the math and CPI checked out right on. I guess, contract, their current contract expired June thirtieth. What I would like to do is set up a meeting with with the People's Service Management, whether it's the whole board and myself, or I know AJ has invested interest in this, but he and I, but I'd like to sit down and go through some of these previous problems we've had out there, um, some of the specific items in the proposal. I've got mine pretty marked up already with questions, comments, concerns, and then review their agreement that they provided. And I think we need to be able to put some language in there as far as what happens if they don't. Right now, there's no teeth in there for the county, so I, I I think we just need to work with it. I mean, it it's closed, but we need to refine the details there, with my opinion.
So my thoughts would be, you're way more knowledgeable on the water side, and that's why we have you, and it'd probably be best if you guys negotiated that out and then bring it back for final approval to us.
That, that's what I'd like to see as well, um, with just two of us, it's easier to get quick meetings set up. I, we can send all the emails in the world, but some of us sitting down at the table with somebody discussing, you can get a lot more accomplished, and that's what I'd like to do with them.
That's, that's where I would go.
Yeah, so I went through it.
I'm good with that.
As long as you're good with it.
Yeah, that's fine, there's a lot of conflicting things, and there's some services that we have asked for.
Yeah.
Fee schedule.
Yep.
Yeah.
Or fee changes.
Yeah.
Supposed to do that in ninety days, but they've had five years to do it, and it hasn't happened.
Exactly, so, and that's, and 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 we got emails, Jason and I both have emails, communicate with the, with peoples and and it went nowhere, so, um, the big problem is, I think it's between Worth County and their corporate office. There's, there's zero communication, and they, they've let a lot of things slip through, and we need to get them on the straight, straight page, or straight and narrow, I should say, because that's, yeah, we just need to meet with them, go through this, and make sure that there's some accountability when it's all said and done.
Well, there's been a lot of little things over the years.
Yeah.
Like you said, if a little more attention was given to things, we probably would manage some of the expenses we've had.
Right.
Yeah. Maintenance is not twelve thousand dollars.
Well, that's, you know, with, with chemical costs, we've added a chemical. Um, they have that number, and their, their number came in at less than what they've already spent for this fiscal year.
Right.
And we still got two months left. Or I should say, one, yeah, we still got, yeah. Well, that's the worst part, though, is I'd rather see it upfront month by month, so then all of a sudden, we don't get a bill for ten thousand dollars at the end of the year, because the number was wrong to begin with. Well, no, let's get this as close as we can to begin with.
Yeah.
And then buffer a couple thousand, you know.
I propose thirty five thousand per annual chemicals expenditures, based on looking at the last couple of years with the expenses. They proposed thirty.
Yeah.
And they're already at thirty six.
Already thirty six thousand.
So you're thinking in the next couple of weeks, I mean, we're okay, because it's just an automatic, because it's just, it just does what it does, I mean, the old contract.
Their, their contract.
So we're, we're trying to meet this week.
Yeah, that's why.
Try to meet this week, if not this week, next week, I mean, the contract's written, it just needs.
Just do some tuning.
Yeah, and we're hoping to have it signed by the twentieth.
Right.
So then, then the service can just continue on by July first, so.
With some.
Yeah.
A few.
Hopefully, we can get together and meet this week, if not next week for sure, and then bring something back by the thirteenth.
Okay, perfect.
And then.
Yeah, if you get it in this week and fine tune it, then by the, you still have plenty of time to do it.
Yeah.
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 No problems.
Yeah.
Okay, for sure.
I'll start scheduling that again.
Yeah. Um. Yeah, just, you know, will be Fridays, no good, but Wednesday afternoon, Thursday afternoons, if I can do something for sure.
It's gonna have to be next week.
Okay. Short week, I know, so. Okay, okay, that's fine. So let me know when I'll get myself available. Thank you. Thanks, Jason, appreciate it.
Yeah. Thanks, Jason. Okay. Assistant's office.
I got an email from them, and then I got this.
Yeah.
It's just allowances and disallowances for homes.
Yeah.
Annual.
Yeah.
Annual.
Annual thing we do, right?
Yeah, normally, yeah.
We need to read them all, or we just?
No.
Okay.
I'll just be sending my mothers out.
Okay.
To the military and homestead.
Gotcha. So we just need a motion to business tax property credit allowance and disallowance for military and homestead exemptions.
We'll make that a motion.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Any further discussion? Fairness, paper say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion will carry. Okay. I'm listening, be on again today. Brian coming in?
Hmm. Not sure.
Yeah, problems getting our dust clean.
Yeah.
Get it every company.
Can't get the.
Brian's right here.
No response from people, for my. Brian? You're up. What do you, what do you, what do you, what's the good news, bad news? Uh, any luck?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, they set up bid, Jackie, I need four.
Whoa. That's like ten thousand more than the last one.
Oh, really?
I have no idea.
I don't know, I I guess I, I thought the other one was like six or seven thousand, wasn't it?
It was pushed to ten.
It was pushing ten?
Yeah.
This one seventeen.
Really? I know, the difference between this one and the last one that they were talking, the biggest difference was sanitizing everything as well as coating it. And he also told me, I thought we were only coating up here, but there was a couple of other sections they said that would have to be coated.
Okay.
So, I don't know if the other one would have went up, or if that had been what they said.
Are they, they are talking the same things, though, right?
Yeah.
The same area, same.
Yeah, all the same areas, same things, I think it's just, uh, more.
A little more.
Little, well, a little more, uh, cleaning.
Sanitizing.
Yeah, sanitizing stuff, and then also uh, they talked to Dan a little bit, and the other ones never really did about the ducks going into the jail part of it either, so.
So we're not comparing apples to apples, really. Close, but there's a little.
Yeah.
There's more, there's more.
But he's not getting more, yeah, he's not getting any response.
And, yeah, and the reason why we're doing this is because for the last five months, they've been saying um, they can't get the sprayer that they need. After I talked to this company, they actually subcontracted out with Surf Pro to do this type of stuff, sometimes, for some reason, they don't want to this time. So.
And they can probably get here relatively soon.
Yeah, he said, as soon as it gets approved, let him know, because they have to order the, um, product. Yeah, because it's expensive and they don't just carry it on hand, so.
It sounds like they've done a couple of courthouses.
Yeah, they've done, they did, uh, search order. I think they did zero and sheriff's office and everything in there, just not that long. They did a couple of ones, so.
Oh.
But. But.
Well, yeah, actually, we know it needs to be done with one of the done for.
One of them, I mean.
Before the air went on?
Right, yeah.
And there, the other one, the, the texts are supposed to call me back, never call me back. I call them, it's a different story.
We got a known mold issue, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
So.
What do you do? I mean, if they're not responding to you and showing up, and if you can get somebody here in the next less than thirty days, I think it needs to be done.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a safety thing, it's a health thing, so.
Yeah, definitely.
So I guess what I've basically taken motion then to accept the bid from, I'm not sure which company, once you said the.
Uh, Midwest.
Midwest stuff.
Yeah.
I'm like a motion to accept that bid.
Oh, second.
It's moving second, is there any further discussion? Fairness, favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. And you'll contact Surf Pro and tell them that you won't be needing that service.
Yep. A little bit. Alright.[1771.95]
Thanks, Brad.
Alright. Chris wasn't beyond, cause he had to drive a water sample somewhere today.
Yeah, equalized samples, we have to be available in six hours, so.
Yep.
The hand deliverer.
Okay, right, Jeff.
Why?
Morning, morning.
Uh, so the same recommendations. So last week, on May twenty third, the Board of Supervisors passed ordinance. Twenty twenty two point oh five point sixteen, amending the existing zoning ordinance to include all townships in the county. Based on the zoning ordinance and result of the zoning commission efforts as reported on April sixth. Uh, twenty twenty two, I gotta type them here. Um, the lands in the township of Barton, Bristol, Deer Creek, Fertile. Grove, Kinsit, Lincoln, Silver Lake and Union require zone assignments. As reported, the board on April sixth, the zoning commission conducted a review of land uses. Notified landowners and held public meetings to determine zone assignments in the newly zoned townships. Along with a recommendation for countywide zoning. Those zone assignments were provided to the board supervisors during the April sixth meeting. The zone assignments recommended by the zoning commission are listed below. Uh, we'll give you copies of these after I fix my typo there. It was twenty twenty two, not ten twenty two. The assignments, um. So as I said, they're listed below, the assignments require approval by the board supervisors per section twenty four of the zoning ordinance before they can be added to the zoning map of the county. And Joel, I can send this to you electronic, where she have the parcel numbers and so on, if they approve this. In short, two votes are required, one to approve the change, uh, approve or change the zoning assignment recommendations that are included in here. Uh, and one related to the recommendation that the zoning commission had provided. Suggesting a six month fee free period that would end December twenty two. Uh, for zone changes in the newly zoned townships. The rationale for that is. It, it's possible that as the zoning commission did our review of land use, we might have missed some small stuff. And so we want to provide an opportunity for landowners to say, hey, this shouldn't really be zoned X, Y, Z. And not have to incur a fee for that because it's really just correcting it. So these are the zone assignments that we had provided before. Uh, but as I said, the um, the board supervisors has to vote to approve these changes before they can be added to the map.
These are, these are all the ones that you had a new public hearing.
Yep, right, yep.
Do all the parcels need to be listed on the newspaper?
No, no, because the letters were sent to landowners and we had the public hearing on it where they were posted at the public hearing. And they've been posted at the courthouse. So again, in short, it's, everything would be zoned as ag except these that are listed here. Um, and everything in the two mile area of the Manly city limits would be zoned comparable to the zone assignments that are currently in place by. Manly. Uh, and I did speak to uh the folks at Manly and they do intend to engage supervisors. And NICO to create a twenty eight E agreement. They wanna reclaim that two mile zone.
They wanna keep it as it is, pretty much.
Yep.
Yeah, well, the county has, the county has the, the precedence or the, the priority authority over the, those unincorporated lands. So as NICO said, the manly just has to reclaim that. Um, through a, an agreement with the board of supervisors of twenty eighteen agreement.
There's a lot of rock courses in this county, isn't there?
Yeah.
Gentle, anyway.
Yeah, if it's not there, it will be there someday.
Yep.
Yeah, and all of the quarry owners did specifically ask that lands that they own, that they're not currently mining. They wanted zoned as industrial so that they could extend those minds.
And you did change that.
Yeah, yeah, and that's. Yep, that's reflected in here, just what they wanted.
Just saves them a step later on.
Yeah. A step and expense, yeah.
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 So you're asking for two votes here, so one to approve, so the first one would be one to approve the change to the zone assignment recommendations. How many that emotion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Spend movement second, is there any further discussion? Alright, here, none, who was in favor, say hi. Same sign, motion, okay. Second would be, would recommendation be related to a six month fee free period for anybody wanting to change, is that?
In, right, in those newly zoned townships.
Yep.
So in case there's a land use that we missed, that, you know, should have been included in this, you know, as a non-ag. Gives them an opportunity to petition for that without having to incur a five hundred dollar rezone.
So, okay, yeah, so then if they don't come in and request that in the next six months. Then after that, if you so decide that certain things need to be zoned, I mean, the board decides, then.
Yeah, so what happens?
Pursue that.
Yeah, so the people can, you know, they can apply for a zoning change at any time. And they apply for that zoning change to the zoning commission. We have a public hearing on it. Um, it's just to apply for a zoning change is a five hundred dollar fee.
Correct.
And so this would just waive that fee for zoning changes from ag to something else. In those newly zoned townships.
See, I don't know if I see that one, I was just talking about that place, it was a junkyard. You know, it's been. Flot them, there you go, thank you.
We talked about that yesterday.
I don't know if that's where that's on the zone, I don't see that name.
Is that a junkyard?
Nah, it's been a junkyard for as long as everybody in Worth County can remember.
It's a place where people drop junk off, it's not a.
Yeah, it's a standard.
Not a box recycling, it's a.
It's probably five acres, give or take.
Yeah, it's, people have been dumping stuff there for years.
Yeah.
It's not technically a business, it's just a property that people.
I mean, it's kind of scrap, as far as I'm, they scrapped there for years.
Well, his dad did.
Yeah. I don't know who actually.
I think it's his kid now.
The kids on it.
Art's the guy that, Art.
Art Flows.
That's the guy on the D on the deed, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that might be a. That might be a little bit illegally, man, because if he's not operating a business, you know, it's just private property, it's a collection.
Right, right.
If he's operating this crap business.
I just probably not as, not like a buck salvage yard, no, I mean, it's uh, I mean, we've had two or three door rounds in the last couple of years with it. Put stuff right on the county right over to.
Sure.
Riches.
Well, now we got that pile of tires back there.
Oh, no, it's pile of tires. I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that's his own bag, yeah, I just, cause I don't see it.
It would be, no.
Yeah.
The other one you just brought up would be actually down on uh. Eight thirty eight, um, he runs a appliance recycling.
Across from Arneson. Is he down by Arneson?
Yeah, so we can look into those, what are those places again?
It's uh, the one will be on eight thirty eight, I can't give you the exact address, it's just uh East of Joyce and he runs a appliance recycling center there.
I can give you the parcel number.
And then she, then she runs a uh.
Five hundred block of Ford temp.
Yeah, thank you.
Another business is the rest of.
And what was the other one that you said was a scrapyard?
Be up on the, uh, be on.
Finch and.
Forty.
Uh, that's possible, maybe that's why those tires are coming.
When all the hostile boys were doing a lot of scrapping out there.
Well, now the, now there's another one that popped up, so Leroy Dean Farm too, they're scrapping out of there.
Hospital, sure.
Oh, okay.
Where's that?
Yeah, just south of one oh five, I mean, it's, they're just starting to pile up junk there. That's who the.
Both of them are hostile, one's Benny and one's Hannah.
Okay, Benny was a dog. Two, okay.
Well, they have that Thompson that runs with them too.
Oh, okay. I mean, it's just if they're gonna be running businesses there, I guess, I mean, they would.
Well, that's the key, if they run a business, not, they're not running a business, then there's.
Well, I mean, they are, and they are, I mean, if you're running your own buying scrap and storing scrap for a while. You're not, you're not.
Yeah. Yep. Okay.
Just, just curious, because I don't see those names on there right now. I mean, it's, if they wanna get, they wanna save five hundred bucks, they probably.
Exactly, yep, yeah. And there's probably other kinds of businesses. Now, one thing I wanna make, you know, because we know there's some ag businesses that are in here, there's some others. That I, we discussed earlier, that the zoning, uh, the zoning ordinance says, if you're running a seed business. Out of your place and you don't have a showroom, you know, et cetera. Um, then that's a permitted use in the ag zone, so that does not need to be zoned as.
Showroom or an office.
Showroom is what the ordinance says. But there may be some that are doing chemical stuff that is small scale that we weren't aware of, that should get changed. So, okay.
I just, I, I didn't mean, totally off, but. We were just talking about that a couple of weeks ago.
Last week.
And we've had so many issues with them, but we've had some issues with them.
Right.
Be able to try to control that kind of stuff.
Right.
True.
So. A different one right out here, one oh five, he's obviously running some kind of parts business out of it, up by the duck and, you know. Piling up cars out there. So anyway, so I'll take a motion to waive the uh six month free.
Is that long enough?
I think it is.
Well, first we gotta make a motion on this.
You did. Yeah.
You did.
Yeah, you made a motion.
A motion to waive the six month fee.
Seven second.
Oh, second.
Moving seconds and any further discussion? Fair and honest, please say hi. Take care of what you needed here.
Yeah, one, one more item.
Okay.
The wind ordinance vote, so on June twenty first, uh, twenty twenty one. After months of review and public comment, the zoning commission provided unanimous recommendation for adoption. An ordinance related to commercial wind development in the county. That proposed ordinance was reviewed by the supervisors, who then recommended changes during October twenty twenty one. Those changes were reviewed and commented on by the zoning commission, reported back to the supervisors on November eighth, twenty twenty one. The zoning commission comments to the individual supervisor considered changes. Uh, were then discussed in great detail by the supervisors and decisions on those changes were made by them. During the November twenty twenty, November twenty two, twenty twenty one supervisors meeting. The proposed ordinance was then updated with the supervisor direct changes and presented as version three dot O. On November thirtieth, twenty twenty one. There. Uh, since that time in January and February of twenty twenty two. The supervisors decided to pause conversations related to the proposed commercial wind ordinance. Until they decided the question related to countywide zoning. That question of countywide zoning was then taken up, the final decision was made by the supervisors on May twenty third, twenty twenty two to extend zoning. Now that the question of zoning has been addressed, it's time for the supervisors to take back up the question of the wind ordinance version three dot O. As reflective of the changes they approved in November twenty one. Therefore, the supervisor should begin the process for a vote on that ordinance as was originally called for in the temporary moratorium they passed April twelfth, twenty twenty one. Given the public notice requirements and the public reading of the proposed ordinance, the fastest that the ordinance might be approved by the supervisors would be mid-July. Uh, it should be noted that the moratorium will expire on July first unless extended by the supervisor, so they can address the vote on the proposed ordinance. Uh, therefore, two questions are presented that uh we believe the supervisor should take action on. One, um, should the temporary moratorium be extended or set to expire concurrently with the final vote on the proposed ordinance or some other date? Second, uh, what timeline should be established for a final vote on the proposed ordinance? Uh, that would include the public notice date, the public reading and.
So the question, first one will be the moratorium.
I think the moratorium should be extended for a period of time till we figure out what we're gonna do on the wind ordinance. Whether it's gonna pass or it's gonna fail.
Even if you were to send, you know, if you were to give the anchor. The, uh, the direction to post the notice. The first opportunity for it to be in the paper would be the week of June sixth. Which means the earliest that um you guys could do your first public reading. Would be the twentieth, because you gotta have seven to twenty days notice. So your first public reading would be June twentieth. Which means if you go through three public readings. You're towards the middle of July, you're, you're past the expiration. Of the moratorium.
True.
Then if you, if you're gonna consider extending moratorium rather than establish a date. You could set the expiration of moratorium concurrent with your final vote on the ordinance. Whether it passes or fails, once you had that vote, the moratorium would expire at that time.
Yeah, I'd say we, we have to post it, just like we did any other changes with zoning out there before. Couple of years ago, we did one with solar. Solar power, I think we did, they had a change, they brought a change to us, Jane did a couple of years ago, three years ago, probably. That's what I saw, that's all I've actually been a part of, so I do remember that. So yeah, we have to post it. For the creating, so. Have to get it in next week, we could post it, what's the first reading on the twentieth? Here we go, on that week, twenty seventh. Yes, we might extend the moratorium by. Couple of weeks to uh. Get three readings in, start on twenty seventh, we'll be back, I'll be.
Yep. Extend it till like maybe September first, make sure we got ourselves covered, something comes up, then we don't have to do it again.
Put that in the agenda next week.
Well, if you extend it to expire concurrent with your final vote, then you don't have to set a date.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah, I want to put both, those items on for next week, I would say, I guess that's my thought.
We can set moratorium and set public hearing.
That works for you guys.
We can almost skip that, June twentieth, not here.
You're saying, you know, you don't think it's necessary for you to be here on the. First reading?
I don't have to be here.
Oh, you, you're not gonna be here on the twentieth?
I'm not gonna be here on June twentieth.
Gotcha, so.
And I don't know if I've access.
So actually, yeah, well, yes, that would, I mean, it's important that you be here.
Right. That's what I'm thinking.
If you can, but as far as the vote, I mean, it would be.
Right, the vote's gonna be a couple of weeks later.
We just have that week, if he was gone, you'd have to have the three readings for sure, then that would be the other question.
Well, at least two, because you wouldn't have a form.
Correct, if you don't have a quorum, you have to.
We wouldn't have a majority, we'd have a quorum, we wouldn't have a majority.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we didn't have a member, we had. To do the three, because there was only two of us.
Because we didn't have much.
But we still have a member, it's just.
And I'm not a hundred percent sure that I'm gonna be, so. That's pretty much just, we'll keep moving that way, let's go that route, I guess, and we could set the first three for the twentieth or whatever, we'll, we'll do that next week. Then we're trying to think about it, talk about it.
And then do three of them.
Tuesday that week, cause the holiday wave a little Monday.
And then the eleventh.
Uh the only thing I have is just a little update on that car here, damaged vehicle. All the parts except two came in last Thursday, one is a week out, the other's gonna be. Four to eight weeks, I guess, closer to twelve to sixteen weeks. So we're gonna be down without a car for a little while.
I mean, that makes it important enough part that can't still use it.
Well, hopefully the last one will be able to go without its push bumper. And it just been pushed out, it'd just be without a push bumper, which does have some of the light, so. I asked Jason out there if they can straighten the old one up, just to get us through until anyone's.
So I did pull the trigger on multi-factor, I think I I sent that up to department heads. Yeah, we'll be implementing that here in the next month or two, and that'll be just for computer access. So if you're accessing a computer that's on accounting network, you will be required except for dispatch. And then email, like I said, I'm still trying to decide if we're gonna go to three sixty-five or not. I I figure I'm not gonna throw too much at everybody right now, but once we do decide whether we're which email platform. That will also be a multi-factor access, if you've got a county email system. And then there is one other topic, but I'll.
Anybody else? Zoom in, okay. Supervisor Weekly, yes.
I had North, I have a long-term disaster recovery to me, I missed the first part of the meeting, but it was a long meeting. Meetings overlap, and basically, we're just trying to work through that, to get that thing organized and get it going and get it off the ground. Lot of brainstorming going on, so that's what I had.
I had a, another round of grants for care connections. We got them all finalized. Did about a million dollars worth of grants to go out to provide services we need. We really pushed hard on a lot of services over this way, uh to get these three counties to the east end, so. That'll go, get approved today, but yeah, it was good, I think we gave out. It was just over a million, but I think there might have been twelve. Twelve facilities receiving money for training and offering more services and that kind of stuff, so that'll help us out over here. Then did have a conversation with Jackie and John Daniels and his crew on the urban renewal stuff. If they got it, most everything they need now, getting there, going in the right direction, so. John recommended not doing anything until we know there's a project, like with the field with any other properties, just because we don't wanna start that clock. If we're not ready to do something with it, so. Um any, anything out there will be updated later on, but this is just for the stuff that we know we're talking. Uh pipeline, roads and bridges of this facility, so. And. That was it, I believe.
Central, I would do a little attention, our budget and our. They were talking about our building expansion down there, and that one thing that I'm interested in, I don't know if it may be something, some point we run invisible Tony about it. When they're doing their new cells and stuff, they're all pods, they're just bringing them in in sections and, you know, if we start talking about new courthouse and those kind of things there. It's kinda enter and kind of plug and play type, I don't know if you've ever heard of those or seen those, it's. Speeds up construction and actually probably eliminates some potential problems. Maybe if we get into those points, that could be, I don't know if that was ever in, and I don't never see anything like that in the engineering deal. I just know it helped with the cost of that building down there a lot. Totally different than the whole, whole thing we're looking at, but at least the jail facilities, it's adult and juvenile is probably pretty much similar. It sells itself from what I've seen, so there's nothing comfortable at all, but too little tension either, so. So it'd be, maybe sometime you wanna discuss, I mean, we bring forward with the engineer too at that point, Mr. Tony would be happy to. Come on top to us, you know, give us some insight on that, so.
Could do all the offices that.
You know, there probably is a system out there like that, that, you know, I mean, you can basically build a. And old sage was somewhat that way. It wasn't from, you know, ground up, it was brung in in sections, so. Anything to make it a better building and cost effective is be definitely something to look into if we get to that point, so. So that's all I had, I guess. I talked with our ICAP term on Friday, and he'd like to do a close section Monday. So he was wondering, you know, about agenda items and stuff, I said, I I was mixed up on my dates, I thought it was today he was talking. For some reason, I had WHW in my meetings for next week too, I thought we had a whole. And he was gonna come up here at four, but I think we could do it probably right after our meeting in the morning if it works for him. He he would like to do an in-person the first time, before he, you know, goes to Zoom land or whatever, so.
I got the email, I just.
Did he imagine a time?
No, he didn't.
He's just, I just sent him one earlier this morning. Originally, I thought we'd have to do it in the afternoon when I got back from everything else, so.
After we do it after our meetings.
We could set up at ten thirty or eleven, I mean, at the latest, take care of, you know, for the morning.
Super like a ten.
I mean, we can always reschedule meeting and go in a closed session too, and then come back and finish.
So he's coming, where's he from?
Come on, don't leave.
Yeah, a couple hours, so we get him at nine thirty, ten o'clock, whatever, that'd be fine.
We said, see if you can work for ten o'clock.
Well, we don't run Zoom next week, or you want me to be heading out with.